Okay, it being 6:31 on December 23rd, 2020. This is the Ashland Planning Board meeting. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has issued an emergency order number 12 that waived the physical location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting will be conducted electronically. We encourage members of the public to join our meetings via our Zoom connection. It is always posted on the agenda and on the calendar of the town website. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first I'll do roll call. Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
Paula Hancock.
Present.
Fran Newton.
Present.
And Martine Badger, I am present. Also with us, we have Susan McLeod, who is our land use assistant. And we have three additional people, John Glidden, Todd Elaine, and Lawson Glidden also here. I am going to do the minutes first. And does anyone want me to put them up on the screen?
Yes, Marty.
I can share them, okay.
Please.
Let me, let me do that. Give me just a moment here. Okay, so we're going to share a screen. Just a minute here. Okay, the minutes are up on the screen here. I'll give you a moment to review them here.
Yeah, I've read them, but I don't have a.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, I'm all set.
Yeah, okay, all right. I will accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions, concerns, additions or anything? Okay, roll call vote for the minutes. Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
Paula Hancock.
Aye.
And Martine Badger, aye. Also with us is Fran Newton, our alternate select board representative. Okay. Since we do have three people here, I'm going to move, change the agenda a little bit. We've got with us John Glidden, Lawson Glidden, and Todd Elaine in reference to a potential application. And I want to let John and Lawson and Todd know that these things, these materials came in late yesterday and today. So the rest of the board really has not had a chance to review any of the materials. So. And I do know, and again, to update the other members a little bit, there is an application for a lot line adjustment, basically for the Scribner Building, which is part of Andrew Lane's property in the Mill area. As I said, these materials came in just yesterday and today. They have not been officially accepted at the town office by our land use assistant. And that is always the first step in the process at which the case is assigned a number and reviewed to make sure that all the materials are with it. And then, and as normal process, then that application would then come to the planning board at its next meeting. Depending on the timeline, however, because with any planning board application it does require notices to the newspaper, public posted notices in a couple other places in town, plus a notification to all the abutters to the property in question. And the process for publishing, publishing the notice and getting the abutters notices out, all those have to be in place in the newspaper or with the abutters at least 10 days before the application is considered at a planning board meeting. So looking at our timeline, we will not be able to make our first meeting in January, which is January 6th. Partly because of the holiday coming up, shortage, shortage, short time periods available in the office and getting all the notices prepared, it does take a couple of days to get all of those notices prepared for mailing. So it would not give us that, it would not allow us to provide all those notices 10 days before the January 6th meeting. So I would anticipate it would probably be the January 27th meeting. Now that I've explained all that, John, do you want to speak about this application? Now, I do want to caution you again, the other board members have not had a chance to review this application. We really can't get into discussing the details of the application at this point. This has not been officially submitted and, and accepted by the planning board. So we're probably able more to, just to talk about the process and the timeline.
All right, thank you very much. And sorry that we got it in so late. It just took quite a while to compile all the data. We only just received a couple of days ago the drawing from Holden Engineering, which was, it took 11 days to get from Concord to Ashland. So that's where my delay was. I apologize for that. But anyway, just basically, we would like to do a lot line adjustment and put the Scribner Building back in with the current LW Packard Building and operate it and use the building and fix it up. So I, in the application, I wrote an overview of what we were planning on doing. But basically, I got to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars and fix the roof of the building and make it stable. I've got an engineer lined up to make sure we do things right. The good company, Bonnet Page and Stone, to do the work. And I think basically, in the letter I wrote and the documents I sent along, it'll show everybody what I plan on doing. And I do have a time schedule. But I understand that in these times that my schedule may slip and it may slip significantly. And the contractors that I've picked out have given quotes, may or may not be the actual ones to do the work, but the quote is there for you to see the scope of what we are thinking of doing, whether it happens to be the same environmental engineer that does the, the work or not. And I guess we're just looking to planning board to give us some guidance so that we can have all our paperwork correct at the next meeting and notices can be sent properly. So I guess that's it.
Susan?
Yes. Well, we're actually talking about two entirely different things here. The, the only thing that's needed for the lot line adjustment is whether or not it conforms with the zoning of the day and, and the obviously participation of the other property owner, which is involved in the lot line. Anything beyond that about the scope of the work would be something entirely different as a site plan review for the expansion of your business. And that would be, again, some follow-up to the lot line. But we didn't need all the information, engineering information for a lot line adjustment. But as our schedules are set up, the deadline for receiving any applications is usually the second week of the month for the, the next planning board meeting, which is the following first Wednesday of that, that particular month. Because as Martine outlined, our, our schedule for getting published ads in the paper and getting all the certified mailings to abutters has to be on a certain timeline that also fits into the schedule, the fact that we can only work part-time, either as volunteers or a part-time employee to, to address all these deadlines, so.
Yeah, and the deadlines themselves, the timelines and the deadlines are actually set by our rules of procedure and state RSAs. So we really do not have options of significantly altering any of, any of our timelines. So what will happen? The next time Susan is in the office, she will, she will, she will get the application and any additional materials with it. She will review it briefly to make sure that everything is, is there that needs to be there for us to consider. And then she will, probably, we would probably maybe accept the application on January 6th or at, or probab, more likely on the January 27th. Is that the date? I just lost the date. Accept and consider the application, have the public hearing.
It's 27th.
27th, yes. So in the meantime, notices will be prepared. Abutters notices will be sent out. Newspaper advertisement will be prepared. And you will be on, Mr. Glidden, you will be on that mailing list also as you are obviously in a butter to the property.
Yeah, very good. And I did drop off a check or a couple checks and a whole pile of paperwork and everything into the town office late this afternoon.
Okay, okay.
And if there's something missing, let me know. I'd love to fix it so we don't lose a lot of time.
Absolutely. But I would anticipate probably the consideration of the application and public hearing and so on would be on that fourth Wednesday of January, which is the 27th.
That will work out very good for us. That would be good.
Okay. If you have any questions in the meantime, email the planning board as you have been doing.
Okay, very good. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, goodbye, good night.
Good night.
Yeah.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Now, just a second, we'll move to our next item here. Okay. And as I explained, Kathleen and Paula and Fran, all those materials came in late yesterday and this morning. So we haven't had a chance to even make copies or forward anything to any of you. So that, that's why I just wanted to talk about just the process and the timeline.
Well, the town clerk wasn't in today and she's the agent to accept the money and the office closes at noon time tomorrow, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Our big item is the excavation regulations. Hopefully, we can pretty much finish those up tonight. I would like to. And there we go. I emailed to everybody and I think everyone has a paper copy also. Fran, did you have a chance to pick yours up at the office?
I didn't, but I have it electronically.
You've got it, okay, great. I want to just briefly go through the changes that we made over the last couple of meetings, just to review them. And I think we are just about to the point where we'll move on to the next step. Okay.
I was surprised we had whittled it down to so few, considering what we were working with.
Yes. And the red notes, if you've got a paper copy or, or online, actually, the red notes are the last items that we discussed and the last changes that we made. And I think we've cleared up everything. So on page three, under item R, number two in red will involve the removal from the site of less than 1,000 cubic yards. We changed that from the original 2,000 cubic yards.
Should we still allow cubic yard to the statewide board?
Sure, we can do that. Absolutely.
I noticed like in the next, on letter S, it spelled out.
It is spelled out, okay. We'll go through again for things like that, for consistency and clarity, yeah. Page four. We had, on, on page four, exceptions from excavation permit. Under, under number five, we actually had a sentence in there, actually two sentences that were pretty much the same thing. So I crossed out that first one. The, as regulated by RSA, that was inserted. Instead of regulator, in the following paragraph twice, I substituted it for planning board, which is what we've done all the way through the rest of the document. Arabic numbers were changed to Roman numerals in a couple, couple places in that paragraph also. So those are the only changes on that page. Nothing on page five. Page six. We just kind of reworded the sentence so that it was clear that all the standards that are in RSA 155 are to be adhered to in addition to the following standards that we enumerated below. So that sentence in red is just a rewording of what had been crossed out, just to make it a little clearer. Any questions so far? Stop me quick if, if I go too fast or if you've got a question. Page seven, there was only one little word in the middle, the word four that was corrected. Page eight, no changes. Page nine, the three items at the top, numbers three, four, and five were added. If I remember right, those came, may have come from Susan Slack. Several of these additions had come from Susan Slack at LRPC. And the lower part of the page also was added and in a couple places. Let's see. I think these were, these were, in our last version, were in a slightly different place and we moved them up to under letter B. So we had no problems with the wording. Page 10. Down at the bottom, it's actually not in red, but B at the bottom of the page 10 and C at the top of page 11 were originally all one long paragraph. I started, I started reading and I split into two paragraphs. Okay, just for, for clarity, easier referencing and so on. And so that was, that change at the top of page 11. We later referred to numbers one, two, three, and four in that paragraph as option. So I put the word option in to make it clear so that we could flip back and, and find the right thing. There are a few other changes that we just had to make referencing the correct sections. Page 12. At the very bottom, that was the sentence that we rewrote for the fees. And those fees will be enumerated on the application form when we create that. And they will be broken out. Middle of the page, number four, we changed it to three public, posting in three public places as opposed, we originally had two. And this particular RSA does require three. Okay, no changes on 13. No changes on 14 or 15. Page 16. I crossed out the, in, down at the bottom, I crossed out two phrases that were exactly the same at the first, first half of the paragraph, second half of the paragraph. Laura Specter Morgan had questioned that. And as I went back and looked through the RSA, I decided best to pull that out. I know we went, we went kind of back and forth on that. At this point, I've decided to pull them out. But, so those are the basic changes. There were a couple places where I renumbered a little bit. Let's see, where were those? Okay, on page 13 and 14. Under excavation plan, I numbered and then lettered number one and then small letters A through R. And then I did a number two and then A through G for that section. Those all, those had all been, they were different numbers and it just didn't fit the outline very well. Now, there were a couple of questions that Paula had that I wanted to address. And she asked, first of all, about guarant, guarant, I don't have it in front of me, Paula, so if I misrepresent, clarify me. She asked about what do we have to guarantee that things are taken care of or finished or cleaned up if a person walks away from their project? And one of the big parts of that guarantee is the reclamation plan that they have to submit as part of their application. Basically says how they have to have it all cleaned up. But also, the other part of that is under section 11, performance guarantee. They have to have a financial guarantee that will cover the cost of reclamation if they do walk away. And that's, that's in, it could be in, those are the four options. But in a sense, it becomes money that the town has access to or is guaranteed that is there in some form that if the excavator, excavation owner walks away, the town has a, the resource to pull on to clean it up. But that's, that's one guarantee, that's part of the guarantee. It's a very important piece.
The reason, the reason for the question, I mean, I, I understand your response. The reason for the question, or I guess the basis of the concern is an excavator who comes in with a shoestring financial plan or comes in and says, yes, I have the financial backing I need to do the project. But then the company goes bankrupt or the federal grant doesn't come through and he's left flat-footed and has to close. That, that was the basis of the concern. And do we have anything to, to guarantee, guarantee payment in those circumstances?
Well, it is that reclamation plan and bond or surety is part of the application. So they cannot even get their permit unless those reclamation plans and the bond or escrow guarantee, insurance is in place. They do not get their excavation permit until that is all in place. And that's, that's part of our process as a planning board of going through their application and be, and making sure that everything is in place, including that reclamation plan and the performance guarantee.
Maybe Susan could expand on that. She's had experience in bonding.
Yes.
Yeah, well, there are, there are several different forms. We certainly, we had a performance bond with Squam River Landing for all the road work that they were doing, particularly on the public road and, and the water and sewer work. So as it was decided and looking at it, and you can get, we, the planning board can also, of course, at this time, hire a professional to help guide the process of even how much to require as, as the escrow account that would be a separate account that the treasurer sets up and, and can only be released through the planning board for whatever reasons. So part of it is deciding how much, how much to put aside into that account. And as I said, there's, there's two different versions. Obviously, the, the one with Squam River, it also was the, the financial holding company that held that bond for them would require annually to, to revisit it and release whatever funds because they had completed the work. The work was approved by the town so that the, the funds could be released back to the, the developer. So I imagine the reclamation would be the same, that as they did the reclamation work, we could read, the planning board of the future would be releasing those funds as it was proven that they were doing the work that was in their reclamation plan. So if, as you say, they don't complete that, that they walk away or they go, you know, they just stop business and leave it, walk away with whatever condition it's in, then that money, the planning board then can hire or go through the town to do the work that's in the reclamation plan using the money that was set aside by, by the applicant for that purpose. So it is upfront money. It's not, it doesn't matter if they disappear or not because the money has to be there before they even start the work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's, there's more to it than I see in the regulations and that was what I was concerned about. My, my other concern had to do with, I saw as far as watching out for pollution of particularly the aquifer, but groundwater per se through excessive water, et cetera. My concern is what, what do we have in place for equipment leaks or oil that gets into the soil that can pollute the groundwater, that sort of thing? Any sort of hazardous material, accident, incident, whatever? That's, that's, that's small but can, can still pollute the, the groundwater and the aquifer with a minimum of fuss and feathers but can, can, can still pollute, but not to the point of an incident where you would bring in the fire department.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be the DES alteration of terrain permit would address all of those and the mitigation that would have to be done.
And alteration of terrain permit is mentioned in this more than once. And there are a couple of other things that, on page seven, under operational standards, number seven, on page seven, says, "No fuels, lubricants, or other toxic polluting chemicals or waste, building materials or rubble shall be stored or buried on site unless in compliance with state and federal laws," et cetera, et cetera. So there's, that's part of one of the operations. So there's, that's part of one of the operational standards that they have to adhere to. On page nine, at the, nine at the top, this is in a section that's labeled aquifers and seasonal high water table, high water tables. Number three at the top, "Extraction shall not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater in the aquifer," and it goes on from there. There was another one. Plus, so the, as Kathleen said, the big one is the alteration of terrain permit that they have to get from DES.
Yes, okay.
There's also on page fourteen, one of the things that they have to submit with their application is specific actions to be taken on the site relative to fuel and chemical handling and storage, dust control, et cetera. So they have to show a plan as to how they will take care of that and prevent an accident.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a comment on that. I understand Paula's concern on this, because you can set the best standards possible. You can have these people sign on the dotted line that they will follow them. And DES does the same as far as standards and must-dos. However, DES also is, tends to be on the side of, you can't prove a potential, so you can't necessarily say you can't do something because that will prevent it. But then they will react to something that does happen, that then, then has to be mitigated and remediated. So, so it is kind of a dance, that you have to put out the best expectations and hope that there is some enforcement of it in some form. Now, again, it, within the document, it does say that the planning board has, if not enforcement powers, then certainly oversight to bring into bear enforcement power on this, as DES also does, if they are following up on it. But it, it's, it's the same situation in everything. It's like you can have the best laws on the book, it's books, it's how they, how well they are enforced to make the best possible outcome.
Okay.
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 I think we are at the point. What I would like to see is us accept this as a draft to take forward to a public hearing, which is the next step that would happen in our process. This document does not have to go on the warrant article. It is a, a set of regulations that is created and approved by the planning board. But we do have to have a public hearing. So I think, and what we would, and with a public hearing, obviously, if there were comments at a public hearing by members of the public, we would take those into consideration to see whether we needed to adjust the draft that we've got right now. That would be the reason for the public hearing. So at this point, I would like a motion to accept the draft.
It helps if I take it off. I just gave you the motion, but I was on mute.
Oh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the Commercial Earth Excavation Regulations Draft of 122120.
Can we add?
What do you want added to it, Mardean?
Add and move it to a public hearing to be scheduled?
Yes, exactly, yeah, you can add that on, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion to accept the draft of the commercial, Commercial Earth Excavation Regulations Draft of 1221 and move it to a public hearing to be scheduled. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions, discussion? Okay. Okay, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And Mardean, aye. Okay, so we will schedule it for a public hearing. What would you suggest, Susan? First meeting in January, or you want to? If we end up with Glidden at the end of January, I don't want to have this the same meeting.
Right, do we have time to get the add in, into the paper? Because I think we only need five business days.
I think that, we'll have to check, yeah.
Yeah.
That may be.
So we just have to check the paper's deadlines for, again, around the holidays here.
If we have to do it on the same night as, as Glidden application, so be it, if we, if the January sixth doesn't work. But we can.
Any reason we can't look into the first February meeting?
We could, we could. I mean, that's an option. Yeah, that's an option. We'll take a look at timelines and get that in the newspaper and part of whichever agenda it goes on to, yeah.
Wonder when the legislature is going to change the newspaper posting? That came up at the, at the workshops, that papers, that's not the vehicle that people rely on for public postings any longer.
Oh, I don't know.
It has to be done at the, at the state level.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I feel a big weight off of us that this, we moved to the next step. We may not have to talk about it too much longer.
Oh, I think that. And again, as I, as I mentioned to Caitlin, she did a lot of the, the initial work on getting all the samples and pulling things together to have something to work on.
Yes, and she worked with.
Appreciate her effort.
Absolutely, and.
Susan Slack was invaluable, I feel, too.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's understandable to us. So we could understand exactly what we were doing and what we were proposing as these audiences.
Yes, yes.
That was a big help.
Definitely.
Well, she also saw it in relationship to what is currently with the ZB.
Yes.
So that, that's another reason to make sure that this is good and solid and on the books as, as soon as feasibly possible.
Right, right.
This goes with our wellhead protection ordinance, too, that was.
Yes, it does, it does, yes.
We had the help of LRPC for that, too, so.
Definitely. Okay.
Can I put this somewhere else? No, I'm afraid, I'm afraid to, not yet.
Yeah. Back just a little bit on the Glidden application. I didn't want too much detail for the content of the application, because we shouldn't be talking about it at this point. We will get all the information, all the background information, all the copies of the documents out to everybody as soon as Susan does the first step in the processing, and then we'll go from there. But that is it, so I, I wanted to make sure that they were clear on the process and the timeline. And they may at some point, I don't know whether they may have an attorney with them when they present it or not, we'll see. Let's see. And I do have, part of the information that I will get out to everybody is a couple of questions that I asked Susan Slack in reference to this app, potential application and her responses. And it has to do with, again, process, so I'll share that with everybody, too. Going into it now is not going to make much sense until we get all the paperwork together.
Board is a process-driven board.
Yeah.
There's, we, and that's, that's how we have to approach everything.
Definitely. Okay, the other little thing we need to deal with is back, remember, Farnham Towing and Recovery. Okay, at our last meeting, in fact, in the minutes we just approved, we denied the waiver of a site plan review, and the notice of decision was sent to Mr. Farnham with a list very clearly stating what he needed to do. And that list included to file a complete site plan application, to include floor plan of the building area and exterior area being used for the business in place of a surveyed site plan, a complete description of the nature of the business, including life safety measures, complete list of abutters, appropriate fees, signatures of owner and agent, and obviously, through the regular process, a formal hearing with the planning board for the site plan review application. So we had a brief response from Mr. Farnham. I'm not sure that he's quite clear as to the process that our notice of decision detailed. We will continue communication with him to clarify that process, whatever, what we need to do. But in the meantime, someone has written in with a concern about that particular business and leakage of oil and fuel onto the pavement outside. So that is an issue that we will need to look at. And I believe someone, Kathleen, you would have had someone a while ago express a bit of a concern similar to that.
The nature of the business and the proximity to the water and, you know, the life safety issues within the building, fire suppression, areas like that.
Yeah. One.
We don't know, I, you know, I do not know what's inside that building.
No, none of us do.
What layout is and, and how, how it's being used.
Right. One possible thing that I thought about doing as a planning board, send a memo to town manager and probably copy to the select board to ask him to direct the new building inspector, code enforcement officer, to investigate the oil and fuel spillage inside and outside. I would like to have some more information before we have another site plan, a site plan application from this person. Thoughts? We need to, we've had, we, I think we need to know concretely whether there is spillage. So we're going to need somebody to look at it.
Or how any of the products are being stored and contained, what kind of containers are there? I, I also am a little concerned about the amount of what was I saying, stuff, items, tractor trailer, camphers, and some other things are now parked in that area. I don't know if that's available in that village residential area. My understanding would be it would have been parking for vehicles, not for other items.
You're talking about the, the side of Parkway?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
That's, that's what I was told, that same business person is using it to store their bigger pieces of equipment.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I, I would like to know how, if he has a plan in place or how he is going to deal with fuels, hazardous materials, liquid coming out of, of various automobiles, et cetera, and how he plans to deal with that from a business plan aspect. And secondly, if he's bringing in automobiles, what, what his plan is in place to dispose of the parts that he is not going to use, or whatever, how they'll, how they'll be removed from, from the site.
Yeah. Now, obviously, those would be some questions that we would ask during a site plan review process. How he intends to prevent issues or mitigate issues. I think what we need to know, first of all, are there current issues right now that need to be dealt with? Susan? What do you think?
Yeah, because I, I think we, in the notice of decision, it was made clear that without knowing the entire nature and what his plan is to handle all, as you say, the, once you get into vehicles and their fuels and whatever, and now we've had at least one formal complaint, which I did reply to, saying that the, the notice of decision was to have denied the, because of the lack of information on the scope of the business, and that whether or not DES permits were involved for the containment of fuel, et cetera.
Right.
So my assumption, too, is that that's what we're going to have to tell Mr. Farnham, that the nature of his business as it appears and what he has given us information on probably does involve some type of DES oversight on this. Again, the fact that the, the property owner had even put in his lease as to this is the, the nature of the business without going any further. We even went through this with the, the other tenant, whom we're not even sure is there anymore, the, the corner collector of classics, where he was going to sell them, but he was not going to do any type of work whatsoever on them.
It was just storage.
It was just storage. So this, this seems a little more involved to be able to ask those questions.
Yeah.
And I, I think it is, it is, I think it is in our, everybody's best interest that because it's come to our attention with a, a formal complaint, and I don't know if it was CC to Charlie or not,
No, it was not. I have it in front of me. It was sent just to the planning board.
Okay, so in, in this, in this particular case, I think a memo to bring this to the attention that some sort of action is needed, and the planning board does not any type of enforcement.
Right.
And the fact that it is not, it's, it's not, it hasn't been a business that's been, you know, through the process for approval that we know what type of business it is.
Right.
If it is already problematic, that it makes sense that code enforcement have a look.
Okay. So I think I think we'll draft a, draft a memo to that effect, asking for, for enforcement to.
Do we need to have the the safety issue with the with GP to look into it as far as fire suppression, or, you know, did they even have fire extinguishers available, or a fire blanket, what, you know, in case of emergency? Is there anything available?
I don't know, what, do we do that ahead of time? Do, does that become part of the site plan review? Do we cite?
Within the memo, we could ask the code enforcement and fire and safety inspector, which means somebody from the fire department has a look at the same time, or asks, at least asks those same questions.
Yeah.
You know, the, you know, it, it isn't an industrial building, but it's surrounded by residential.
It is, it is, yeah.
We have to be mindful of, you know, the safety because of the proximity, and if anything should happen, you know, it, it's a very confined area.
Yeah. So we will, Susan and I will work on a memo to Charlie to request the code enforcement officer. Charlie to request the code enforcement officer, officer to investigate regarding oil and fuel spillage inside and outside and fire safety to check it. Um, I think what we, one little thing we need to put in the memo is the fact that he did ask for a waiver of site plan review. We denied it and we have asked him to come back with a full site plan review. So, so that the code enforcement officer knows where this person is in the process.
Yeah, well, actually, after I replied to the complainant, um, or the concerned citizen.
Yes.
I, I forwarded that to Charlie and the board of selectmen along with the notice of decision attached.
Okay, good.
So that's the first step that they are aware that there is, there has been a formal complaint. And the second one is to ask for what we think is the proper follow-up, um, in this memo.
Yeah, okay.
So I look at the town manager as just being a facilitator to have the code enforcement officer to, um, go to the site and review it, not to, um, provide any other information, um, in order for, um, we, we don't need anecdotal or opinion, you know, opinions out there. We need to fol- just follow a, a protocol to have it move forward.
Right, so requesting some kind of investigation then brings forth the actual in- information that if a cease and desist or something of that nature.
To be done.
Step, you have the information from code enforcement and fire and safety enforcement.
Yes, yes.
Instead of just people complaining.
Yeah, yeah. That gives us the factual backup. Yeah. Okay. So we'll move that on to a another step. Um, anything else? I have, over the next few days, I'm going to have to write a summary for the town report for the planning board.
Haven't done that yet, Marlene?
No, I haven't. So I will probably, um, as I get a draft ready, I'll send it out to each of you. Please give me any comments, corrections. Uh, no, you don't need that or hey, you forgot about this. So, um, uh, if you have time to look through whatever I send out as a draft, let me know.
Have Fran help you with that. She loves doing this.
So I'm going to have to go through all the minutes first of the, this last year. And go from there. Okay. Um, I don't think I have anything else.
Well, I just have one little tidbit of
Yes.
poking around for information.
Okay.
Because the, the other, the other possibility, uh, down in the mill area was, was again, a discontinuation of a road and a, and whatnot. And you have to go all over the RSAs to find these things. But in, within the powers of the planning board, if it's a petition in rat, a warrant article to discontinue a road, the planning board can play a role in that anything that has to do with the layout and development of the, the town is supposed to go through the planning board. So a petitioned warrant article, the planning board has six, sixty days to come up with a report as to whether to support, to support it or not support it. And if the planning board does not support the discontinuation of a road, it takes two-thirds vote of the legislative body to discontinue it.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of other pieces that have to fall into place before that can...
As far as that, I didn't have, I didn't do the digging, but I knew, I go, wait a minute. The cart has been put before the horse.
In fact, uh...
To discontinue, you have, you have to certify, notify the abutters before you have the vote.
Yeah.
Um, okay, what...
And obviously, even before all of that, if it does come to us for any kind of information or opinion, I want to make sure that the town does own that road. I want to know what they own and where it is.
Picky, picky, picky.
Yeah, I know.
Remember going down this when it was considered for municipal parking and...
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah. So, um, that's kind of mixed, kind of meshed in with, uh, what Glidden wants to do for a lot line adjustment. And you'll see as I start forwarding all the stuff to you, his initial memo and so on, you'll see how, um, we need to, and we need to, as a planning board, we're going to need to keep those two issues very separate. The lot line adjustment relative to this Gribner building is a totally different issue from Parkway.
Yes, and it's a totally different issue from what he's going to intend to do with the building when and if he actually owns it. That's a site plan.
Yes, yes. And I'm glad you mentioned that, uh, Susan, because if you hadn't, I was going to say, a lot of what he had in his original memo had nothing to do with a lot line adjustment. As he described all of what he was going to do with the building and plans and so on and so forth, that's a site plan, that's permits, that's everything else, not lot line adjustment. So we're going to have to be very careful to keep all these issues separate in our minds.
My sense is that this is not how things were handled in the past. Um, and we have to be vigilant that we follow the statutes, yeah.
We're following the process.
That's right.
Yep. Okay.
Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas?
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Fran. Fran there with the palm trees and the ocean. I didn't tell her, Marlene hasn't gotten out of fall yet, but...
No, I don't want to get out of fall.
I told you I was going to Tahiti. Here I am, you know?
Hey. Um...
The same back to you, Fran, huh? What, I, I can't even imagine what next year is going to be like, I guess.
Okay.
It's got to be better. It can't be worse.
Yeah.
Yeah. Watch what you're saying. Don't get...
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Hi to everybody and Merry Christmas.
Yeah.